It was on. Oh, I'm on now. Okay. All right. All right, let's try that again. Good afternoon, everybody. Today is March seventh, twenty twenty-three. Meeting begins at three P M. We're in the U N A County Commissioners's Chamber, and we will encourage everybody to please shut your phones off or silence them. And we will start up, start today with a prayer from Davy Jensen and pledge from Caleb Hall. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Caleb. All right, approval of the minutes of the, excuse Sonia. Oh, yeah. Need to excuse Sonia. She, sometimes we have to divide and conquer, and she's at the Oil and Gas Symposium yesterday and today, so we'll excuse her. Thanks for reminding me, John. Approval of minutes of the special meeting for February twenty-seventh.
I've read those minutes. Didn't see any changes that need to be made. I would make a motion to accept them.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Report of warrants, Mike Wilkins.
Okay, we are on. Commissioners, glad to report these were created, modified, and deleted in my office. Warrants from March second, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of three hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. Just some I wanted to bring out. We did have an emergency funding one, but we were able to get everything done, so I'm not going to present that as a claim to C D Electric. It was for the tubing hill for nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Also, we, we paid F F K R Architects and Planners for sixty-three thousand, six seventy-seven, which was on the new remodel of the ice rink. And that was a contract that was let out to U E L S as part of that contract with them. Other than that, everything just normal bills. I didn't see anything else that was kind of a one-time.
Was that one a claim then on the?
No, we was able to get things taken care of, so we're good with that one.
All right, well, thank you, and we don't need a motion to approve them at all, so, all right, thank you, Mike. Cemetery certificates.
Two or three today, Commissioners. La Pointe Cemetery, Melanie Thompson and Jason Ward Thompson, Block one thirty-two, Lot A, spaces one through eight, and Block one thirty-two, Lot D, spaces four and five. Rock Point Cemetery Phase Two, Thoral R Bodley and Ruth Bodley, Block three thirty-six, Lot D, space twenty-nine, and Block three thirty-six, Lot C, space forty. Moving to Vernal Memorial Park, Andrew Franciscus and Marcy Zinniger, Lot two oh five, space twenty-one.
All right. Any questions, comments, motions?
I'd make a motion to accept those presented by Mr. Wilkins.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Go to tax matters.
Yes, Commissioners, I have one tax matter today. This is a tax cell home that the landowner, the homeowner, has come in and filled out all the required paperwork and requesting a one-year deferral till next year. She has made a five hundred dollar payment on it. She's asking, we didn't total up, but anyway, it's a deferral for one year to pull it from the tax cell and give her another year to pay it.
All right.
And that is serial number twelve, zero, one, zero, 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 three, two.
All right, any questions, comments, or motions?
I would make a motion that we approve that extension of one-year deferral as presented by Mr. Wilkins.
Have a motion that's, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Weed control contract, Mr. Wilkins again.
Yeah, I got him all.
I seen the weed, I seen the weed guy out there.
He's out there, but he's kind of upset. We only got two bids, though, so anyway.
All right.
First bid I'll open is from Steve Regan Company out of Salt Lake City. And we'll see. Now, the Commissioners, these are going to have a lot of different numbers on them based on the amount of chemical that we will use. So I was, as I try to get into this taped-up thing, recommend we just take these under consideration and award at a future meeting. Let Nate take them back and go through them all. So we did receive a bid from Steve Regan company, and it was received on time, and he has got all the quotations and prices of the chemicals we need there. The next one is one we don't know who it's actually from. It's from somewhere in Idaho. I can tell you that much. Nutrient Solutions out of, see if I can see where they're from. As far as the envelope says, it's from Pocatello, Idaho. So with that, Commissioners, I'd recommend we take these under consideration for a week. Let, see what chemical needs we need and what, how much, and see what's the best price is on that.
All righty, thank you. Let's see, Mr. Wilkins, budget transfers and approval.
Right, Commissioners, according to the new policy, in order to a transfer from one department to another department, I need approval from you guys to even do it, so I'm requesting approval today, and then we'll present the resolution in next week's meeting. The first one I'm looking at is Emergency Services. Forty-five thousand, four hundred dollars was budgeted in there. That's also budgeted in pay, in salaries. So we need to remove that amount from that budget. Transit room tax, the Jensen Welcome Center was fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars over what the contract is, so we need to adjust that one down. And then in Western Park for the new construction, seven point one million was put in Western Park and not in Western Park Capital Project. So we need to make those changes, and I'll present that in next week's meeting as a resolution on the agenda.
And then you need us to vote of approval?
We just need approval to allow me to put it on the agenda next week.
I'd recommend, recommend, I'd make a motion that we accept the decision to create a resolution for next meeting, authorizing Mr. Wilkins to pursue that, present it to our next meeting.
To budget, you need, is that good? Does that got us covered?
I think so, John, don't you? Yeah.
That's presented or something like that?
That's presented.
All right, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Thank you, Mike. Storytelling Festival. Bernie, come up here and tell us a story.
I can tell many stories. Are you sure you're ready for that? We just wanted to come again and thank you for your participation, for the county's participation, tell you all about the Storytelling Festival, and we're really trying to grow our audience this year. We would hate to not be able to bring the, the Storytelling Festival, but that's, that's one of our big goals, so there are information, what a Storytelling Festival is. We bring nationally-known tellers out here. It's a great opportunity for families to come or, or anyone to come enjoy that. So we also would love more sponsors. If anybody has extra money that they'd like to give me, I'd be happy to do that. Take it anytime. So I also gave you some DVDs just to give you an example of what some storytellers are, but we just want to thank you and hope to see you there. We're changing it to Monday and Tuesday this year in hopes that we can get audiences, because we know hopefully, spring will be here in a couple of weeks or more spring-like than we are now, right now. And so we've always run into problems on the Friday, Saturday with baseball games and softball games out of town and dance recitals, so we're trying Monday and Tuesday and, and hope that we can grow our audiences that way.
Well, good, and, and thank you for, how many years you been doing this?
This is our nineteenth.
Nineteenth year, you know, it's a great thing for a community.
It, it really is.
It is great, and you know, and it, you know, things like this don't happen without people like you getting in there and getting after, involved, but thank you.
Yes, we're, we're lucky that the Schools Foundation has always sponsored us, so, so we're able to, to get some support from them as well. Okay, no, thank you.
I might add on that, that is March twentieth and twenty-first.
All right, Tri-County Health Annual Report, Kirk. Haven't seen you, or have seen you, but not like we used to see you.
Here's some paper copies.
Thank you, sir.
I just realized I forgot my H D M I adapter, so I don't have anything to display. Is there a way for us to pull up the website or can we use the paper?
It's all right. I have my laptop, but I, mine only has like a U S B C. I don't have an H D M I. I forgot my adapter.
If there's a U S B C, then I could pull it up, but I don't have, I don't have this.
Yeah, it's all right. We can just look at the paper version. I have a U S B C laptop, but, yeah.
Do we have a U S B C to H D M I?
That's all right. I, I thought I had it in my briefcase and I didn't.
I think Tony went after one.
But we can look at the paper version, and it's also on our website under About Us.
All right, I think somebody ran to maybe get one, but we, I don't know, I'm not sure that that's what she was doing, so we might have to.
It's the same as the paper version, but on the second page there, we can go over the financials, which is the meat of it. Anyway, I apologize. I thought I had it. I know that there was discussion, especially early in the legislative session this year, about state versus local contributions to health departments, and there was quite a bit of topic about that, and so that first first pie chart there on the second page that shows our, our revenue sources, you can see that we get about fifty percent of our revenue through federal, federal sources. Hey, all right, we can pull it up then. No, that's different. That's, that's an apple. That's okay. No, mine's a U S B C. No worries. So we get about fifty percent of our revenue through federal grants. And thank you very much, whoever ran and grabbed that. I appreciate it. And then the blue column there, the lighter blue, is the the county contributions, and then the state contributions are in black. And then we get a few other areas, and then the bit, the bigger yellow one there is our fee for service. So we're about twenty percent of our revenue comes from fees. About eighteen percent of our revenue comes from the county contributions. Eleven, twelve percent comes from the state, and about fifty percent comes from federal grants and federal contracts. And looking at our expenses in twenty twenty-two, about forty-five percent is salaries and about twenty-five percent is benefits. And so the bulk of our expenses are salaries and benefits. We also do get some pass-through money, which is the darker blue column there. And each year, we will release a funding opportunity announcement to local agencies. School districts have applied in the past. Northeastern Counseling has applied in the past. The, the Local Area Prevention Action Coalition has applied in the past. But that will be coming up in July, and so we'll have a funding opportunity announcement. We usually have about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars that were required to pass through from state tax revenue on vaping and tobacco sales tax. We get a portion of that and we're required to pass that through towards prevention actions in the community. Evidence-based actions that are aimed at preventing teens from starting smoking or starting using addictive substances of any kind. And so we'll be, we'll be doing that soon. I just wanted to call attention to that. Outside of that, I also wanted to introduce you to Bruce McKee. You knew, you may have met Carver Black. He was our, our business manager. We just brought Bruce McKee on as our financial director, and Carver has, has moved on. And so Bruce, I don't know if he wanted to say anything, but Bruce is local here. You grew up in Tridell?
Yeah, I'm a local resident.
Hey, that is the one I need. We can, we can show the, we can show a little presentation if we want, but otherwise, the, the charts are the same. I also included our twenty twenty-three approved budget in the, in the presentation, but that's also available on our About Us webpage. But both Bruce and I are available if there are ever questions about finances at Tri-County. We both, we were both very much devoted to making sure all of our operations are transparent to all counties and to the public, so. Any questions for me?
We, we all through with COVID?
I am. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all.
Yeah, we're through with COVID.
How is the COVID a little bitter, something? How we, what do we hear much?
You know, we, we track hospitalizations, so starting maybe oh, this early this spring, or, yeah. Starting last spring, we moved from counting every case to just looking at hospitalizations to give us a gauge. Once we got through that last sort of big outbreak in, in the fall of twenty-one, moving into twenty-two, we moved to just tracking and monitoring hospitalizations. We get weekly reports from our hospitals and clinics about people that have arrived with COVID-like symptoms and influenza-like symptoms, and whether or not they got a diagnosis of either. Things have been relatively quiet. We've had a few upticks. In fact, just a couple of weeks ago, we had a, a little bit of an uptick. I think that in that one week period, we had four people that were hospitalized with flu and four that were hospitalized, or eight that were hospitalized with COVID a couple of weeks ago. We monitor that, but we are nowhere near the scenario that we were looking at a couple of years ago where we faced overwhelming our hospitals. COVID's here, a good bulk of the population has some level of antibodies. It seems like those antibodies wane over time and, and new variants come through, but so far, all of the new variants have been fairly mild in comparison to those original waves. So it's something we'll continue to monitor. It's possible something could change, but I anticipate this will just be with us like R S V and influenza, and will be a seasonal respiratory issue that a lot of us just have to face each year, and we'll see where vaccinations go. I, I don't think that the F D A feels comfortable with the current data to fully recommend an annual booster at this point. Definitely a booster during the crisis months. Moving forward, more data will need to be gathered before I think there will be an official recommendation for an annual COVID shot, but I anticipate that's the direction things will go.
All right. Comments? John, any comments to anybody?
No, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Yeah, happy to be here and welcome any questions anybody ever has for us.
Anybody in the audience have, you want to torture him while he's standing up there?
Yeah, now's your opportunity. I'm used to it. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate you. All right, number nine, C J C Contract Amendment Number One. How are you?
I don't love speaking in front of people, so.
Whoops, okay, introduce yourself. I'm sorry.
I'm trying to get, I'm short.
Kaylin Be-
So Kaylin Beatty, Director of the Children's Justice Center. So I just have a contract amendment to the contract that the county has with the State of Utah's A G Office. They fund a portion of our program. What this amendment is, is just adding our rollover amount from what we didn't spend last fiscal year. So they are giving us two hundred and two dollars and eighty-one cents back to, onto our budget that we didn't spend last year, so.
Okay, all right. And John, just an approval of receiving that back, or how do we need?
Just need to approve the C J C Contract Amendment One as presented.
Okay. All right, any questions, concerns, or motions?
I'd make a motion that we accept Amendment Number One to the C J C Contract with the A G's Office as presented.
All right, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. I'll just sign this and hand it right back to you. If you want, you don't have to wait. Let's see, does it tell me where to? Contract signature. I'll be contractor signature. Wait there, you, try to catch me. Thank you. Yeah, all right. Good morning, good afternoon. All right, Memorandum of Agreement Regarding the Mitigation of Adverse Effects to the Ashley Canal Piping Project, Deanna Nyberg, Community Development. Third week here?
Third, no. Second week here.
Second week in here, yeah. Being tortured.
Meeting, yeah. Second time in this meeting.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this is just an agreement between U N A County and the Natural Resources Conservation Service, U N A Special Service District One, Ashley Central Irrigation Company, and the Utah State Historic Preservation Office. And the agreement is regarding the mitigation of adverse effects of piping the Ashley Central Canal. It's just addressing the Kids Canal portion of that, so just from five hundred north to Main Street. U N A County will be the sponsor of this project. The N R C S will be providing technical and financial assistance. And the mitigation includes modifying the project so that the pipeline runs on the west side and the bank of the canal, and that'll minimize the impact on trees. Special Service District One is purchasing water shares to keep the water flowing into the canal. The water will be collected at Main Street and used by the Special Service District, and it was brought to our attention that the agreement doesn't mention specifically who will be purchasing those water shares, so we have reached out to the N R C S and asked them to add that to the final draft of the agreement. An interpretive kiosk will be placed at Kids Canal, and the library will be doing a short film. And that's all that the U N A County will be involved with, with that.
All righty, any questions? John, are we, what do we need in here? John, John Sturmer?
Sam, you, do you have any ongoing concerns with this? You've been part of the emails that have been going back and forth since the work session meeting yesterday.
I've, I've no direct concerns. There, they verified the Special Service District One is purchasing the water. There were a number of things that are in the environmental E I S in the big, huge document that they've had on file for public inspection, and they're now going back through and, and drawing out some of those things that are listed to put in this agreement so that everyone knows what they're agreeing to without having to go through that big binder. And my suggestion, again, this is probably more of John's call, but is that you sit on this for a week and we bring it back next week, because they seem to be pretty responsive to the things that have come up. But Tara Hamilton did mention that there were a few parties that she's still communicating with as of about ten minutes before the meeting to finalize language.
You betcha. That'd be great. We'll just put this on next week's agenda and circle it or put it on hold or whatever they want to call it there.
And I, I, I'm really appreciative of the way the N R C S and the other entities have responded to the local citizens here who've brought up concerns. It's been a, honestly, it's been a great project for seeing one of these federal bureaus actually follow the process and pay attention to the local people.
Well, you got to put that out to those, a lot of, what do you want to say, maybe a lot of good support from neighbors and concerned citizens or, you know, the community, I guess.
Yep, it pays to, pays to read those notices, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there not a move to make it National Historic Site?
It's be, it's eligible, and anything that's eligible that a federal agency is involved with, they treat as though it was already on the list, and that's why they're doing these mitigation efforts. Now, we could, or State History could write up the nomination to formally put it on the list, and that probably would be a good idea. Doesn't absolutely have to happen, and it wouldn't change this part of the process other than at some point it'd be on the list and we go buy a plaque and put the plaque with the kiosk. It's honorific in nature. But it, it'd be cool.
It would be good.
I think it would be cool.
Sam, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your work and help on this.
Mr. Chair, if I can just add some clarification from yesterday's meeting. And with that, Sam is right, yeah, the, the last email that came through was at two forty-four P M with some additional clarification, so it probably would be good just to see if the agreement solidifies any, any more before we have our approval, so I, I would completely support that to just table it till next week, which would just be a chair decision. There wouldn't need to be any motion, but let me just add a little bit of context from yesterday's meeting. So regarding the amount of water for the Kids Canal portion, I'll just read this email that's coming from Tara Hoffman, who is with N R C S in Salt Lake City, Utah. So she put in there that as the E A is, is written, fifteen water shares have already been earmarked by the Ashley Central Irrigation Company. In addition, two shares have been requested to be purchased. Once all of those shares are purchased, they would be, they would be added to the Special Service District account. And then that, in a meeting from the S S D, says that they will look for water that they can collect to run down the canal up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that was part of their, their meeting. So just to add a little more context, I know we had that discussion yesterday about how much water that's being acquired for the, the Kids Canal. I, I think that helps us understand it a little bit more.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and table that, and thank you for the good discussion. All right, item number eleven, backhoe lease agreement from Wheeler Cat. Probably the most popular guy in U N A County days, for the last three months. Mr. Snow Removal Scott Hardman.
I didn't want to say it, but yeah, Road Department. No, we're, we're trying. A lot of, a lot of issues, but we're doing the best we can, so.
Okay.
Trying. I originally presented this as a lease agreement, because most of our cat equipment is through Cat Financial, and it is a lease. But I put this on the agenda, and I got, looking at it, this is actually just, it's a rental, so I didn't know if we needed to present this today, John, do you? It's just a, it's a rental. It's not a lease, actually.
Seems like we've approved them rentals. We would need to. So, yeah, let's just have it presented and then approve.
It's for a-
Let's have the presentation on it and see what's going on.
Yeah, that's gonna be my question. Is this a rental or are we gonna lease purchase it?
Rental.
Rental, just flat, we're gonna rent it for a couple of months and send it back or whatever.
Yep.
That makes a big difference in how we do things.
All right. Go ahead, Scott.
It's a year-long rental for fourteen thousand dollars for a retired four-thirty backhoe.
Okay. One year, is that year-to-year lease, is that what?
It, it's just a one-year lease. We've been leasing it for past five years, so.
Okay, all right, any questions, comments? John, you need to look at, little John, do you need to look at anything on the contract? Okay, big John, you want to make a motion or?
I, I go back to the same question. Is this a lease or a rental? You've told me both ways since you've been there. Is this gonna be a year rental or a year lease?
Year rental.
Okay. I would move that we accept the rental agreement for a backhoe from Wheeler Cat not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars a year.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, thank you, and the road crew and everybody for, you guys have had a rough three months, four months.
It's been rough, and the pothole situation's rough as well.
Yeah, pothole season is coming.
We're, we're working on it. I'm getting that next, so, don't whinge me.
But Scott, thank you. You know, it's, it's really, for what you've been facing, what's done, what's happened, it's been, you guys have done terrific down there.
We have a great crew, so.
So appreciate you and your crew.
Road shop's gonna be closed for seven months. Trying to get everybody's time used up.
They all have P T O now, or cop time, so.
So might not see you guys- So mind not to see you guys.
I'll be there, but they'll all be gone.
It's been outstanding. Thank you so much for your service. It's been great.
Thank you. Ah, all right, Teagan. Number twelve, Mary Cashin Canyon Litigation Update. Deputy County Attorney.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Teagan Troutner. I'm with the UNA County Attorney's Office. I'm Deputy County Attorney. Just a little background. So back last June, a quiet title was filed by Simplot and it was about ownership of some roads on Simplot property. We had some discussions in closed session last Monday. And at the end of those closed sessions, we came up with a non-binding agreement with the approval of the Commissioners and the approval of Simplot. Many of the details are not fleshed out yet and so we'll continue to work those out. It's, it's a non-binding agreement, so that just means that neither party is obligated to fulfill either end because there might be some, some things that we've discussed that aren't actually feasible, that we thought were feasible. The first, the first one is that Mary Cashin Canyon will be rerouted. The goal is to reroute it onto BLM property. And so Simplot will file that application and that will be sponsored, co-sponsored by the county. And with that, so the portion of it that's going to be rerouted, it's the bottom portion. We'll see if. I don't know if I have the same thing either, but we'll try it out. That's my power button. Yeah, all right. Okay. So this is the plot map, Mary Cashin Canyon. Let's see. So the part of the road that's in dispute starts down here at the Independence Canyon Ridge Junction, goes on to Simplot property here and then some BLM, Simplot crosses over to BLM, back onto Simplot, BLM. Then Simplot around this contour and then crosses onto Sim, over onto BLM and then this property right here where it eventually meets up with the Searle Ranch Road. The portions that we're talking about are from this point up here to this bottom point. Wait for it. Sometimes the internet does not go as fast as you want it to. To this part right here on Simplot's property. So the, the goal and the intention of the parties is that this bottom portion will stay open to the public after, this is all with the understanding that the BLM will grant us that application, which we all know might take some time and may or may not happen. But we're hopeful that it will happen. So then the road would be routed, rerouted onto BLM property up here, up until the, up to the top. And so part of the agreement is that while that application is pending, this road, Mary Cashin Canyon, would still stay open to the public with certain conditions. So the first condition is that the county will provide materials to fence this stretch of road down here, which is approximately one mile. But Mike Cook will figure that one out for us with GIS. And so the county would provide the materials and Simplot would provide, would build it and maintain it. And then while that fence was being built, the goal is that Simplot would, they, they're still going to keep their gates up there and they're still going to lock the gates. But any citizen who calls Simplot and wants to access that road will have the access to the code to access it. How often they're going to change the code, that was kind of not quite fleshed out as was what times citizens would be able to call to get the code. That wasn't quite fleshed out either. So we're still working on that. But that is the goal for now. So it'd be locked here, locked here and then locked at these two sections. And then they'll, they would all have an access code and each, the access code would be same, the same for all of the gates. And then once that fence is put up, those gates would be unlocked at this bottom portion. And then I think that pretty much sums up what the non-binding agreement was that we had came to Commissioners. Does that sit with what we had discussed?
That's my direct recollection. That's correct. I thought, I thought it was a good discussion. It's a, what do you want to say? It's been quite a project for a couple of years, I guess, or still there, but quite discussion. But it was, I think we're working, it's positive and we're working forward with it. And you sure did a good job, Teagan. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Yeah, hopefully this will all be fleshed out sooner rather than later. All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
UNA Basin Revitalization Fund Contract Amendment Number Twenty-two dash DWO zero one three nine, G D Bird, Grants. Zeke pulled the seniority on you and made you come.
Yep, he sure did. Jenny Bird, Purchasing and Grants. The first one I have is a contract amendment for the Revitalization Fund Contract. The only thing that we are changing is the end date. So we, we requested an eighteen-month extension in October because we haven't spent the funds for the homeless services yet. So in October, we still had twenty-twenty-one budget that we were using and now we've just paid our first invoice for the twenty-twenty-two contract. So the new end date for that contract will be December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four with your approval. And that was sent over and they are requesting an e-signature on that.
Okay, all right. I'd make a motion that we accept that information and UNA Basin Revitalization Fund Contract Amendment Twenty-two dash DW dash C one thirty-nine be approved, which will extend the date of termination to December of twenty-four.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, Utah Highway Safety Office Grant Contract.
Yes, so this one, we were just notified by the Utah Highway Safety Office that UNA County was awarded a grant in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars to purchase a Speed Alert Radar message sign with trailer for the Sheriff's Office. There is no county match required. We just have to purchase the equipment and then submit for reimbursement on this.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. Big John?
I would happen to make a motion that we accept that information and that we do enter a contract with Utah Highway Safety to provide the sign in the amount of approximately one thou, or seventeen thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
And this one's an e-signature too, and they've both been sent to you, so I'll follow up after the meeting.
Okay, they've been sent to me and then you sign them off the computer?
Yes.
Okay, you'll follow up, make. We'll be right down. Okay, public, public comments. Boy, all right. Well, I guess then the next motion.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.